Welcome to the regular meeting of Lynchburg City Council, 7:30 PM, January 14th, 2020. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Perro, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to recognize the passing of Olivia Joy Johnson, who tragically lost her life while visiting her family over Christmas. Olivia was a local reporter for the news in advance, and she will be sorely missed. If you will please join me in a moment of silence for Olivia. We come tonight, oh God, recognizing what an honor it is to serve this community by representing our citizens on city council. We are reminded of our need for wisdom and clarity of mind as we consider and act on the business that is before us. Thank you for this great country and for the wisdom and foresight of our founding fathers who crafted the Constitution allowing tonight's participants to assemble and speak freely. Bless those who are attending tonight and guide them to pursue civil discourse and to help them show respect and acceptance of all opinions offered. Therefore, we seek your wisdom from on high and ask that as we give our full attention to those that speak to us, that your spirit lead our decisions. May the outcome of this meeting be a blessing to our city and bring glory unto you. In the name above all names, I pray, amen. Flag is right there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's city council agenda is divided into two sections, consent agenda and public hearing. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. First, I will turn to Councilmember Nelson, who has a statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I need to disclose that my wife is the principal of an elementary school in the city. As such, it may appear to be the appearance of a conflict of interest. I've been advised by the city attorney and the Commonwealth attorney that that does not legally create a conflict, and I do affirm that I can vote on those issues that are before us tonight objectively and impartially. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? May I please have a hand vote of the approval for the agenda?
Aye.
Thank you, and the agenda passes. Next is our public hearing. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. First, our staff member will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and the group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Prior to beginning tonight's public hearing, council needs to establish some rules of procedure. First, as the presiding officer, I would like to make a motion that we limit the speakers to those that have signed up by 7:30 PM only. Is there a second? Thank you. A motion has been made in second. I have no further discussion. Councilmember Wilder, do you have any discussion? All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Heggelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I object, because this is totally different from what you said in your email back to me and other citizens. In the email where you said we will follow normal procedures, I outlined and said specifically that a normal public hearing, you want to close the ability for someone to speak before the public hearing is even open, and that is not a normal procedure. The normal procedure is we have a public hearing, people speak, you sign up from an orderly perspective. If somebody else would like to speak, you typically say, would anybody else like to speak? And then they can speak. Rather than before the public hearing even begins, you de facto say you require them to sign up by 7:30. I'm glad that you're at least putting this as a vote to limit people who are here. Lots of people came. Lots of people are here because they wanted to speak, and whether they wanted to speak and sign up on the list, or whether they, throughout the night, they decide to speak because they were moved by great compassion because somebody said something, I don't think that's good, and I think it's actually absolutely the opposite of what you said in the email. So I won't be voting for it, and I'm surprised that you even made that motion.
I have the prerogative to change my mind. I have the prerogative to change my mind. Council has the right to change its rules of procedure before a public hearing. If you would like to hear the legal, if you would like to hear legal comments from our city attorney, you can do so. However, you have had your discussion. Is there another? Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too disagree with this motion. I don't think it's right. When our normal rules of procedure, it allows our citizens to address council. They don't, the signup sheet is to, a way to affect order during the council's discussion process, and we've traditionally always allowed people to speak at the close of meeting. What if somebody's got to work until 7:30 tonight and can't show up until eight or nine o'clock? I don't think it's right to bar them from speaking. I will not support this motion, and I just don't think it's fair to our citizens to change something abruptly like this.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I do make my comments, it may be appropriate for the mayor to inform the audience of the normal rules of council as to what we tolerate and what we would ask not to happen in a public hearing. On that point, up until today, I believe the entire public believed that pretty much the normal rules of council and public hearings would be followed tonight, and to the extent that that normal rule of protocol is that anyone who has not been able to sign up in a timely manner can have an opportunity to speak at the end, and I think we ought to adhere to the same policy tonight. I understand the reason for it. It certainly would be convenient to cut things short, but I think in looking at history, no government has encountered difficulties by listening to their citizens too much. The problems arise when government leaders don't listen enough. Thank you.
I am going to go ahead and read the rules of procedure right now so that we can make this clear about forward-going in this meeting, and then Councilmember Wilder will have a statement. Tonight, we have a number of citizens who have signed up to speak on the topic of gun laws and the Second Amendment. Because of this, it is and can be an emotional subject. I want to remind everyone of some of Lynchburg City Council's rules of conduct. Speakers are expected to adhere to the time limits of three minutes for an individual speaker and five minutes if the speaker represents a group. Citizens can express conflicting and diverse positions regarding this topic, so in order to encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation of persons who may hold differing or unpopular opinions, applause, jeers, cheers from the audience are not permitted. Further, when speaking at or attending a city council meeting, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, or use profanity or vulgar language. Having explained the rules of conduct, I am confident that all of the citizens who are here tonight will treat one another with their usual courtesy and respect, even though they may hold strong and differing opinions when it comes to this topic. I will now defer to Councilmember Wilder for his comment, and then I may defer to our city attorney for explanation of some other rules of council procedures. Councilmember Wilder.
Thank you. As far as the question, how many persons have already signed up to speak?
Right now, 123 persons have signed, 120 have signed up. I said applause, cheers, or jeers. And let me explain. Let me clearly explain. Council is within its legal right to call for a vote at any time during the hearing. We want to hear from all who have signed up, and we would like to hear from particularly our Lynchburg residents. Mr. Irwin, what is the legal procedure for us adding to the rules of procedure through the motions I have made?
Rules of procedure are adopted to allow council to conduct its meetings in a timely and efficient manner. So council rules of procedure specifically state anytime council thinks it appropriate to do so, council can change or add to its normal rules of procedure. So city council is certainly within its rights to say, given the size of the meeting, that we need to implement some special rules of procedure that we wouldn't normally have for a public hearing.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to have a comment regarding this vote? Thank you. I will now call for a voice vote.
Madam Mayor, would you please restate the motion? Please restate the motion.
Okay. The motion is to limit the speakers to those that have signed up by 7:30 PM only. That is the motion. It has been seconded, and I will call for the vote, a voice vote. Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Nay.
Councilmember Perro.
Nay.
Councilmember Heggelson.
Nay.
I am reminding you of our council protocol.
Madam Mayor.
With, yes, Councilmember Heggelson.
Thank you. With regarding the changing of the rules of procedure and knowing that we have, as you just mentioned a second ago, a emotional issue, what I would like to see is us striking from our normal rules of procedure that no applause, cheers, or jeers are not allowed, but I would like them to be allowed, because we got, we're in an auditorium that they're used to clapping, and since you like to change the rules of procedure, let's. Let's allow that. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that motion.
The motion has been made in second. Is there further discussion?
No, just I, it is nice to see our citizens. It's nice to respect our citizens. They've all come out. They want to be heard. They want to be seen. They care about their rights, and so do we. And so when they're an emotionally charged issue, something as much as our freedom of speech, something as much as our Second Amendment freedom and rights to bear arms, and all 10 of the Bill of Rights, I do hope that we allow our citizens to express themselves because this is a fun time. We're all here together pulling for the Constitution, so I do hope you vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, I'm going to support this. I support Councilmember Heggelson's motion. I would like to add a clarifying statement, though. I would absolutely encourage cheers, jeers, applause, whatever's appropriate for each of us as public figures, but I would ask that for those that speak tonight, that you just grant them the courtesy that they would hopefully grant you, but we're fair game.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't disagree with anything that Councilmember Heggelson or Councilmember Perro said. However, I want to hear what the multitude who have gathered tonight have to say, and I think applause, jeers, and other outbursts is just going to prolong the night and will interfere with our ability to hear everyone in an expeditious manner.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The vote is to allow the applause, cheers, and jeers. So I will call for a voice vote, starting with Councilmember Nelson.
Nay.
Councilmember Perro.
Aye.
Councilmember Heggelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Nay.
And I vote nay also. Next, the motion I would like to make is that council members would like to limit speakers to Lynchburg residents only. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made in second to limit speakers to Lynchburg residents only. I have no further discussion on this. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are here this evening to hear from members of the city of Lynchburg, folks who sent us here to do their work. I think it's appropriate that we make space for them to speak here tonight and that they are our concern, so I am fully in favor of this motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Heggelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I guess over these last several weeks since, I think it's before Christmas even, there's been emails floating around with regarding public hearing. We had the meeting on December 9th that said we want to have a public hearing where we can hear from our citizens, after which there was all sorts of advertisements, there was things in the newspaper, there were things that were wrong, there were things that were then corrected. I think there were maybe five different announcements in the newspaper, of which there never had any of this in there. And so now to say, and I can appreciate you want to hear from our citizens, but there's lots of people that have property in Lynchburg that invest in our city. There's lots of people that work in Lynchburg. There's lots of people that shop in Lynchburg and pay money to our stores and real estate, meals, and sales tax. And so with that, to change the rules middle of the game, and especially when you wrote an email back to me, I'll just read it, just maybe since somebody forgot, Thursday, December 26th, where you said to the gentleman that emailed, "Thank you for your thoughts. Please note that all regular procedures will be followed for the public hearing on January We did get an email from our city manager that said in our normal procedures, we do not require citizens to have their, to disclose their address. I think former Mayor Foster was here and who remembers that very vividly. I don't know what you're planning on going through people's driver's license to verify their address or whatnot, but I think that's a new procedure, that it would be nice if you would have said that at the beginning, but you couldn't because council never voted on that. So I'm not going to support this motion. I think we should hear from people. If you wanted to change the rules, you shouldn't change it in the mid-game. It should have been done ahead of time, so.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to hear first and foremost from the citizens of Lynchburg. However, that does not mean, as has been pointed out, that there are others who are not residents of the city who have vital interest in the city, either by ownership of property or businesses, or frequently bring their patronage to Lynchburg, and their insights are valuable to me. It's not this particular motion, but I think it would be appropriate to first hear from Lynchburg, and then, once everyone who's wanted to speak, who is a citizen of Lynchburg, has spoken, then we allow the others to speak, whether they had signed up or not.
Is that an amendment to the motion?
For that reason, I would make that as a friendly amendment, if it could be.
I will accept that amendment to the motion, and that amendment is that once Lynchburg residents have exhausted the opportunity to speak, then we will hear from other outside residents.
Non-residents, yes.
All right. I will accept that amendment to the motion. Are we prepared to vote on that motion? Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not want to belabor this point because I want to get to the public hearing itself. That's the reason we're here. But I do want to ask, I know there are people representing groups that are here tonight. Where do they stand in your motion?
If they are representing a group and they have signed up, they will have the opportunity to announce that group, and they will have five minutes.
If they are not from Lynchburg but representing Lynchburg citizens?
If they are a group and they have signed up, whether they are outside resident or a Lynchburg resident, but we will hear from the Lynchburg residents first.
All right. As we are, as we are representatives of the city of Lynchburg, I feel like I can support the amendment that Councilmember Nelson proposed, which gives priority to Lynchburg citizens, but I want to make sure we hear from all of our citizens tonight, no matter where they're from. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. I am ready to call for a vote if there is no more discussion, and I will call for a voice vote, starting with Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Perro.
Aye.
Councilmember Heggelson.
Nay.
Thank you, and the ayes have it. All right, thank you. We are now about to begin our public hearing. I will be calling the names from the list as they have been presented to me. Oh, that, okay, okay, all right. I will ask to go back for one more motion. We have elected officials that have signed up, so I am asking if you would like to give any preference to elected officials who wish to speak. I know that we do have some who have signed up but would like to be considered as regular citizens for tonight, and so they will go in the order by which they have signed up. But that would be for an elected official or their representative. Is there a second, or will we go in the order of sign up? The motion has not, I'm sorry?
I'm unclear as to what the motion is.
Okay. So we have elected officials that have signed up. Would we like to give preference of them to speak ahead of citizens or behind citizens?
Madam Mayor, I guess I would, I don't think we probably need to consider this. I think that, I understand that the elected officials who are in the room have said that they would prefer to speak in which, the order in which they signed up. That's, I applaud that, and I think that makes sense.
All right. Thank you very much. I wanted to give consideration for that. All right. I will call speakers approximately two to five at a time. I will ask that you step to the microphones on either side, and you can go from the first person that is called, and go in the order that you are called. I will say, if there are speakers tonight, we do have a list of 120 approximately at least, and so if there are persons who feel like they have heard what their statement is and they would like to defer to the person behind them, that's fine. You can do that, so, just so people do know that. First is Chris Feraldi. Next is Liz Corrales, followed by Meredith Summers, Laura Pazulo, and Demetrius Alexander. And I apologize if I do not say your name correctly. It is just a mistake. I'm very sorry, but I wanted to say that upfront. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, first, I want to thank you for allowing us to have this public hearing in this facility, allowing the community to come out in force to talk to you and address you on this issue. My point is very simple. When you, as elected officials, swear an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and Virginia, that includes the Second Amendment, and so I encourage you to vote in favor of making the city of Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary and uphold that vote. And I, if you'll indulge me, if you support this motion tonight, do not heckle, do not jeer, do not applaud. I just want you to stand. If you support, just stand. No, do not heckle. Please do not heckle. I want to respect the rules. I just want to send this message. If you support this tonight, this is the majority. Thank you.
Liz Corrales.
My name is Elizabeth Corrales, and I am a Lynchburg resident. Today, I am speaking as a woman and a mother. Even before women, women could vote, they could legally carry firearms for self-defense. Hunters are not the only ones that these gun laws will affect. When you're a mom of four, running errands by yourself, believe me, you are going to want the great equalizer on your side. All last year, mothers in Lynchburg, we heard warnings of traffickers in our area. We were told to be careful in parking lots. We were told to be especially alert as we loaded our children in the car. We heard warnings of wolves on the playground and stories of attempts being made to take children from their front yards. I'm a stay-at-home mother. I homeschool all four of my children. I'm often home alone. If a criminal decided to break in my home with the intent to rob, kill, rape, or harm me and my children, I would not have time to wait around for the police. Limiting my right to defend myself is not just unconstitutional, it's dangerous, it's irresponsible. As a woman and mother of four, I will not comply with unconstitutional laws that would restrict my ability to defend myself and ultimately put me and my family at risk. Restrictive gun laws do not help law-abiding citizens safe, it does not make us safe. It only makes it easier for criminals to take advantage of an unarmed population. Furthermore, all around the world right now, we see examples of tyranny. We see people standing up, not to the everyday criminal, but to the criminals in our own government that seek to control them. This is why we have the right to bear arms. Guns are not just needed when defending oneself from your local bad guy, but they are needed to defend our rights from a government that may one day act out in tyranny against its own people. I'll end with a quote from Thomas Jefferson. "The greatest danger to American freedom is a government that ignores the Constitution."
Meredith Summers. Meredith Summers. We can either get through all of these speakers, or we can have more votes. Meredith Summers.
Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Meredith Summers, and I'm a 29-year-old female who tops out at a whopping 5 feet 1 and 3/4 inch and about 110 pounds. I own my own handgun, which is pink, and I legally conceal and carry wherever I go. This gun is my protection, because no amount of self-defense tactics will keep the average person from overpowering me. I also have taken the responsibility to defend others if the occasion should arise. I would like to also note that I'm a Lynchburg resident who loves to experience the arts, nature, shopping, restaurants, sporting events, but I will not feel safe if I cannot carry my gun. In times where, in time we're, we're trying to promote women power, taking away my Second Amendment rights will render myself and other women powerless. I am an engineer at a local manufacturing company. Like myself, there are many other law-abiding, gun-owning, hard-working citizens that are not afraid to leave Lynchburg. This will gravely impact the Lynchburg economy. Let's follow this logic for a moment. A struggling economy now needs to instate laws and systems to manage every gun and gun owner, not to mention the reports of lost and stolen guns and the required background checks. You need extremely expensive software, more employees to manage it, more police officers to build records and manage them. All for what? To document all law-abiding gun owners, which will make it easy to confiscate their guns. To prove a point, when I applied for my conceal and carry, the basic system did not even identify that the clerk spelled my street name wrong. I'm supposed to believe that the new system will be able to keep track of each person's gun, lost, stolen, whether a background check was done? What if I sell my gun to a West Virginia resident? The feasibility and logic here just doesn't add up. The icing on the cake is that the police officers already don't get the respect they deserve due to the media, and now we will ask them to act against the remaining citizens that show them respect. Making drugs illegal did not keep drugs off the street and out of criminals' hands. The same will happen as we limit Second Amendment rights. Criminals will not follow the laws, and you will have law-abiding, defenseless citizens like myself. I'm asking you to step up and represent myself and these people before the state government by voting to pass the sanctuary.
Do not make me a victim. I have 12 years' experience as a law enforcement officer. I hold a master's degree in criminal justice administration and security. I am a certified self-defense instructor for a national organization, have trained in Krav Maga, and I compete in firearm competitions. Unfortunately, my training and experience alone cannot stop a criminal intent on killing me if I am unable to carry my firearm wherever I go. Do not make me a victim. I was a police officer and crime scene detective in the largest municipality in the state of Vermont, in a department with over 100 brothers and sisters in blue. At the time, Vermont was perhaps the most gun-friendly state in the country. Not once was I threatened with a firearm by a law-abiding citizen. I have listened to women tell me in great detail the horrors they experienced while being raped or beaten mercilessly by a man twice their size, and I've heard the frightened tales of those who thought they were about to die while being robbed. Do not make me a victim. I am a single, 5'2" female who owns a home on over an acre of land. To one side of my house is a cemetery, across from me are multiple acres of farmland. The closest occupied dwelling to me is over 200 yards away, or the length of two football fields for those who need a reference. It literally takes seconds for crimes to be committed. I will not and cannot rely on anyone else, including the police, to help me should criminals break into my home to do god knows what. Do not make me a victim. I have concealed carry since I became a police officer almost 20 years ago. Citizens have willingly approached me, interacted with me in true southern hospitality fashion, and wished me a blessed day. They were none the wiser that I had a firearm on my person. I want to know that when I am in the City of Lynchburg, I can feel safe, knowing that if and when a criminal comes into a business to do harm, I will at least have a fighting chance to save my life and that of others. Do not make me a victim. Some of you on the council feel it is necessary to take no stance against the dozens of proposed bills infringing on our Second Amendment rights. The residents of Lynchburg elected you to be their voice. Sometimes that means going against your own personal beliefs. I fully support Councilman Helgason's sanctuary resolution, unaltered. I urge you to stand up for our rights. We are.
The right to keep and bear arms in Virginia is guaranteed by both the state and federal constitutions. Article 1, Section 13 of the Virginia Constitution provides that in part, that a well-regulated militia, composed of the body of the people, trained to arms is the proper, natural, and safe defense of a free state. Therefore, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. After 1971 adaptation of the Virginia state right, a challenged view was brought forth, saying that this was only for the National Guard. However, this was rejected by the United States Supreme Court. This was concluded in the Columbia versus Heller, that said that it has personal right for every citizen to possess and carry firearms. Now let's hear what our founding fathers, the ones who paved the way through blood, sacrifice, undoubting courage that we can be here today to assemble had to say. Patrick Henry, "The great object is that every man should be armed." Thomas Jefferson, "No man shall ever be denied his right to keep and bear arms, and it is the duty of all men, at all times, to be armed to protect their freedoms." In 1787, Sir Noah Webster wrote, "The supreme powers in America cannot enforce unjust laws by the sword, because the whole body of the people are armed, a force greater than any standing army." James Madison said, "Federal tyranny will be opposed only by the citizens being armed, which Americans possess over any other nation." George Mason, "Disarming the people of Virginia would be the fastest way to enslave them." St. George Tucker said, in who is known as the American Blackstone, he wrote this in his first comments of the United States Constitution, warning of any gun control whatsoever. This may be considered as the Palladium of Liberty, "The right of self-defense is the first law of nature. When the right of the people to keep and bear arms is under any color pretext whatsoever prohibited of any kind, liberty, if not already annihilated, is on the brink of destruction." And according to the FBI website in 2018, for everyone's information, semi-automatic rifles were responsible for 297 of the 14,000 murders in the U.S. By comparison, knives were responsible for 1,515, which equals 0.007% of murders were done by rifles in this country. And to quote Vice Mayor Mary Jane in saying, "Is there anything in our rules that we can say that we can hold a special counsel meeting to vote again on this meeting, or to cancel this meeting here altogether?" To you, I say that particularly you should be ashamed of yourself, because it's the general public that you represent. And I urge you to take the general public's interest in this matter and vote accordingly.
Racinelli Michael, Angie Arthur, Ben Castle, Steve Timmons, Katie Seifert. Racinelli Michael, Angie Arthur, Ben Castle, Steve Timmons, Katie Seifert. And behind them, Shirley Arthur and Kurt Deemer. Please state your name and locality of residence. Racinelli Michael is at...I may be pronouncing the name wrong. Racinelli.
Sergeant First Class Michael Racinelli.
Racinelli.
Marine Corps and Army. Retired. I'm only here for one reason. I'm looking for an apology from the woman that just demeaned every person that served in this country that's in this room. I want her to stand up and look into the face of each soldier that's in here and apologize. The only reason why I'm here, I'm not from Lynchburg, I'm from Bedford County.
Then please defer to a Lynchburg resident, thank you. And next, because he signed up as a City of Lynchburg resident. And Angie Arthur.
I am here tonight as a mom demanding action. A mom demanding that you listen closely to everyone in this room and what we have to say. A mom demanding that you stand behind your people and protect not only the Second Amendment right, but all of our rights. After watching the antics that occurred after we left the last meeting, I will have to say, some of you should be ashamed of your actions, even embarrassed to say you represent the people of Lynchburg. Most of you on council had no intentions of really hearing what we had to say. You already had your minds made up, and you just passed the time by looking at your phones and your iPads. Your minds were made up that it's someone else's responsibility, and you would just sit and wait. Are you really for the people? If you are, then you will quit passing the buck to someone else, and you will support the city and the Constitution that you're supposed to love. Before Christmas, my mom, my daughter, and myself, we went on a shopping trip to Williamsburg. As we were leaving Williamsburg that evening to come home, I took an exit on the road, and as I was merging onto a highway, there was a large white cargo van with tinted windows that came up beside me, wouldn't let me over. The van continued to try and force me to the shoulder of the road. Suddenly, the van sped forward and slammed on its brakes in the middle of the highway, almost making me hit them. For a second, both of our vehicles stopped, and no one was moving. I waited a few seconds with my eyes fixed on the doors of the van to see if anybody would get out. The van started going again and suddenly stopped, doing the same thing again. I was truly afraid. There was no one else on the road, just our two vehicles. It was dark. Thankfully, another vehicle started to approach towards us, and the van sped off out of sight. The tinted windows were so dark, I had no idea who or how many people were in the van. That evening, I was more than afraid and upset. I was angry at myself, because I had failed to take my gun along on the trip. That night could have ended terribly. That night, I failed to be prepared to protect my loved ones. This has been a wake-up call for me, and I'm sure many others in this room. We, the Second Amendment supporters, are here tonight, are passionate about our calls, and we have done our study. There are people in this room that have what it takes to take your seat. If you are not willing to support your people, people who display the qualities of fairness, honesty, integrity, and an open mind, the qualities that I'm having a hard time finding here. I urge you tonight to seriously consider asking yourself a few questions. Have I changed my mind on this issue? Am I more informed?
Thank you, Ms. Arthur, your time is up.
I hope you're willing to support us in our vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Castle.
Ben Castle, resident of Lynchburg, Virginia. Let every soul be subject unto the higher powers, for there is no power but of God. The powers that be are ordained of God; whoever therefore resisteth the power, resisteth the ordinance of God, and they that resist shall receive to themselves damnation. For rulers are not a terror to good works, but to the evil. Wilt thou then not be afraid of the power, do that which is good, and thou shalt have praise of the same; for he is the minister of God to thee for good; but if thou do that which is evil, be afraid, for he beareth not the sword in vain; for he is the minister of God, a revenger to execute wrath upon him that doeth evil. City councilors, Madam Mayor, citizens of Lynchburg, fellow Virginians. I thank God above for the opportunity to speak to the issue before us. I am a pastor, recently installed this past year. Upon my return to Virginia, my heart soared. This land is the land of my fathers. My branch of the Castle family comes from Dickinson County. This land is also the land of my birth. My father being a soldier, I was born in Fort Belvoir Army Hospital. I hope, by God's grace, that Old Dominion will prove to be the land of my burial. But I am fearful for my state. With the laws contemplated by the government in Richmond, I fear that tyranny will increase, and the motto of our state will prove to be an empty slogan. This text in Romans defines the purpose of civil government. That purpose is to punish evil and to encourage the good. The laws contemplated in Richmond will have the opposite effect. These laws, if passed, will be a punishment of the good and an encouragement to the evil. By restricting gun ownership, these laws, now contemplated by the government in Richmond, will remove from the good citizens of this state the most effectual means of their own preservation. By removing the tools of self-defense, these laws will punish the good. They will also encourage the evil. For as is clear from the recent events in White Settlement, Texas, the evil regard no law. To the evil, nothing is sacred, not God's worship, nor God's image, man himself, nor God's ministers, you. The civil magistrate. The effect of these laws will be the opposite of God's purpose for civil government. For this reason, I exhore you before God and these citizens, do not encourage the evil, rather encourage the good by declaring Lynchburg to be a sanctuary for gun owners. Join the rest of our state in opposing this evil legislation, which is unconstitutional, unscriptural, and ill-fitted to promote the ends of civil government, the punishment of the evil, and the encouragement of the good. Thank you.
Steve Timmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank council for your service. This is not an easy job to do at times, and I appreciate your willingness to serve. I'm a retired military officer, a gun owner, a believer in the purpose of the Second Amendment, believer in the constitutional form and representative form of government. I grew up here, this is my home. However, I object to the resolution to declare our city a Second Amendment sanctuary for the following reasons. One, America is a republic, a great republic, and we pledged allegiance to that republic at the beginning of this meeting. As described by Plato in The Republic, rulers should base decisions on rational thought, not emotional appeal. The sanctuary proposal is an emotionally-based reaction to perceived threats, ones that in fact do not yet exist. A Second Amendment sanctuary proposal, therefore, is premature, and reveals a lack of patience and understanding of governmental roles and processes. Number two, it is not your job to represent us in Richmond or make determinations of constitutionality. Mr. Peake and Mr. Walker are our state representatives, and the state and federal court systems exist to make determinations of constitutionality. Lynchburg residents look to you to provide such things as paved streets, clean water, public education, and emergency services. I would beg you to let the systems in place work as they are designed and have worked for us thus far. Third, I find the notion of a sanctuary city repulsive. I didn't like it when certain cities took that position as an immigration sanctuary city. It is not conducive to dialogue, is confrontational and argumentative, inhibiting the discovery of reasonable solutions through thoughtful efforts. The public safety issue of mass gun violence has not been solved, and belligerently stifling discussion of the topic is not helpful. Finally, such a proposed resolution poses a potentially serious threat to public order in the future. Local governments and law enforcement cannot selectively choose which laws to enforce while intentionally defying others. Doing so is lawless, leading to corruption and injustice. Further, where does it end? What sanctuary will be demanded next? I insist that you reject this resolution.
Katie Seifert.
Good evening, I'm Katie Seifert, I'm a resident of Lynchburg. When I came before this body last month, I spoke as a gun owner who is opposed to the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution. I stressed the need for Richmond to debate proposed legislation, and even called out certain proposed legislation that I believe goes too far in impacting law-abiding gun owners. I am heartened by moderate Democrats in Richmond who are also expressing their skepticism and reservation about certain pieces of legislation. But the process is working in Richmond. That proposed legislation is being debated, much of it will be amended, some of it may pass, some legislation will be voted down and tabled, and Richmond is where that process should work. The issue before council this evening is the passage of a resolution that I find quite troublesome. If I may direct your attention to the 10th paragraph, the 10th whereas, "The Lynchburg City Council wishes to express its deep commitment to the rights of all citizens of Lynchburg to keep and bear arms." I have to ask, does all citizens include those who are prohibited from owning firearms due to violent felony convictions? Does all citizens include unsupervised minor children? Does all citizens include those who have been adjudicated mentally incapacitated? With such broad language, does council intend to challenge the Gun Control Act of 1968, or many of these same prohibitions that appeared in the Federal Firearms Act of 1938? In paragraph 12 of this resolution, city council would authorize both legal action and the power to appropriate public funds. Do we have a fiscal impact statement? What is the source of these funds? Is there an end date, or are we promising to expend public funds for any period in the future that may be borne by our children? If we believe this resolution will have legal bearing, we need to answer the questions of the source of funds. If we do not anticipate any expenditures, do we believe this resolution has any standing? The complexity of the issue has not changed, but the General Assembly in Richmond is the correct body to address these issues. Passing such a broad resolution with terrible language and uncalculated potential impacts is absolutely the wrong decision. Once again, I ask that city council oppose this.
Shirley Arthur, Kurt Deemer.
Hello, I'm Shirley Arthur, and I'm a Lynchburg city resident. Our founding fathers put the First Amendment, the right to speech, first, because they wanted citizens to have that right, and the right to assemble peacefully and to petition the government for a redress of grievances, as we are here tonight. They put the Second Amendment next to ensure that citizens had a means of defending themselves against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and against a tyrannical government looking to trample the ten rights afforded us in the Bill of Rights. As a woman, I can think of no greater right than the right to being able to defend myself at any given moment. I have a concealed carry permit, and I... I have a concealed carry permit, and I exercise the right to carry. I pray that I never have to use it, but I'm proud to live in a country that guarantees me the right to do so, if need be. I'd much rather have that right and exercise that right on a daily basis and never need it than to need that right and not have it. I think Lynchburg passing the resolution, as presented by Councilman Hegelson, sends a clear message to our General Assembly, especially with women on our council, voting for and protecting the greatest right for any woman, the right to defend herself if need be. I live and work in Lynchburg, and if these bills that are being proposed are passed, members of our law enforcement community will be asked to go into people's homes, risk their lives and citizens' lives to confiscate items that were legally purchased by law-abiding, tax-paying citizens, when their time could be much better spent investigating and fighting real crimes and protecting the citizens in our great city. Thank you to Councilmen Perro, Hegelson, and Nelson for your support of this resolution. I'd like to implore the rest of the council, especially Mayor Tweedy and Vice Mayor Dolan, woman to woman, please do not take the right of women to protect themselves, if need be. We have worked too hard to have the same rights as everyone else. Do not strip us of anything that we currently have. Thank you.
Kurt Deema.
Yes, council, thank you for having us tonight. I apologize for my voice. I thought about my comments tonight, and I wrote them down, and I made a speech like I did last meeting, and came prepared to read it, but I'm going to throw those away. I don't think y'all are ready to hear what I had to say, and I'm not sure you're really going to listen to anything I say, anyway. All I've seen from this council is an unwillingness to really listen to the people that you represent. And we are the sovereigns. We are the kings in this country. That's what "we the people" means. We're the ones that loaned you the power you have tonight to sit up there. It's not permanent. We are here to ask you to represent us by passing a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution. We couldn't have been more clear. I think everybody here needs to be thanked by me because all I did was start a petition. And I thought before I came in here, I was going to deliver it again. And again, I decided, I'm not sure you guys even read the last one I gave you. I don't think you know who was on it. Well, there's over 2,000, there's 2,050 people that signed that, okay? And I will mail it to you. I hope you read it. I hope you pay attention. I hope, more than that, you pay attention to the people that are here. And in that vein, I want to speak for two people who didn't want to speak, who didn't have a voice tonight, but I want to speak for them and not for myself. The first one is a single mother who lives in the downtown Richmond area, who is involved in a domestic situation with an ex and has had her door knocked down more than once. She wants to be able to level the playing field and to protect her child. She doesn't weigh 100 pounds. She's every bit of four foot three. Her ex is about six foot four and weighs over 200 pounds. And the only tool that she has is a firearm. That's all. And a cellphone to call the police. But crimes happen in about 18 seconds, and the police take about five minutes. So when you make your decision tonight, regardless of your personal decision, your personal feelings, your political leanings, you may have come in here with your mind made up about how you're exactly going to vote, but I would ask you to set that aside and remember that lady in the second ward of Lynchburg who was counting on you to continue to defend our rights and to pass the Second Amendment resolution unchanged. That's what she asked me to tell you. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Dan Keeney, Dustin Childress, Nicole Childress, Robert Flint, Tim Yance. Dan Keeney, Dustin Childress, Nicole Childress, Robert Flint, Tim Yance. Thank you.
Madam Mayor Tweedy, Madam Vice Mayor Dolan, council members. My name is Dan Keeney. I live in Lynchburg. I am not a felon, despite what the proposed gun laws say. I am not a child to be looked after by a nanny state in Richmond. I'm not a Virginian subject to be ordered about by recently-elected officials acting like royalty addressing their subjects. Yesterday, I witnessed those officials at the General Assembly Building in Richmond break their oaths of office four times by passing on to the Senate floor unconstitutional bills that trample our rights. I'm an American citizen. The government works for us. We, the people of Virginia, thank you in advance for voting to join with us and the rest of Virginia for Lynchburg to become a Second Amendment sanctuary city. By doing so, opposing all proposed state laws that would violate our God-given and constitutional rights to self-defense, due process, free speech, and the right to freely The Second Amendment confirms and ensures that we will be able to protect all of the United States bills of rights. For those who would try to explain away the plain and direct language of the Second Amendment, such as comments like, and I quote, "I do believe that limitations may be most appropriate to the exercise of that right," in reference to the Second Amendment, and another quote, "this will close the door on sanctuary city requests and calm down the zealots." To you, I say, shame, shame, shame on all of you who don't see this for what it is. Do the right thing. Make Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary city. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Dustin Childress, please state your name and locality, because then I will not have to repeat it when you come to the mic. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dustin Childress. I'm from Ward Four. From 1791 to 1934, there was an understanding, protection, and honoring of our rights that ended with the first government infringement on the Second Amendment, the NFA. Prohibition created by politicians and the idea of safety and well-being was a government telling the people how to act and be safe through government decisions. This created gang and gun violence. The normal and law-abiding citizens were not having shootouts with the police, yet the NFA chipped away at their freedoms. We need harsh and stern punishments for people who commit crimes with guns because they are not following the law to begin with. The NFA was written by those who wrote the laws on prohibition and were put in place by the same president who put American citizens in prison camps on U.S. soil during World War II, all in the name of peace and security. There's never been a shooter who saw a sign that said "No guns allowed" and thought, "Maybe I shouldn't." These laws, stipulations, and regulations only stop law-abiding and caring citizens from exercising their rights. We have the rights of life, and that means not only living our best and most fruitful lives, but also having the ability and chance to protect and preserve it. Our government was instituted to secure and protect these rights in full compliance and obedience to them. It was never intended for the government to be able to change or dictate these unalienable rights. The very definition of infringe is to act as to limit or undermine something or to encroach on it. We are not to be limited as law-abiding citizens in our rights. It was recognized by our founders that we are to be a stronger force than the government, as to not be taken over by the government as free men and women, but instead have our rights protected. This is all being done for the classic cry of peace and security. 1 Thessalonians 5:3 says that "those who cry out peace and security will be overcome with sudden destruction." Benjamin Franklin said that "anyone willing to trade their freedoms for security deserves neither." Our government has been stealing away our rights, spying on us, taking away our due process, and towering over us long enough in the name of peace and security. The use of gun laws has not worked in this country because criminals will do what is in their nature. The worst parts of our country with the most violent and heinous crimes also have the strictest laws being completely ignored by the criminals, all while the people are being left defenseless in these horrible acts because they follow the laws. We will be free, and we will be secure, and we will not bow to tyrannical actions against our rights to do so, but we will respect and honor proper representation and caretakers of our right. Sixth Sense for tyrannous is the motto on our flag and in our hearts, and anyone who will trample us may want to think about that. We will replace and abolish this bought-and-paid-for government and be represented and not led over by a ruling class to enforce their will upon us.
Nicole Childress.
Hello, thank you. My name is Nicole Childress from Ward Four of Lynchburg. I'm a wife, a mother of three. It was said that declaring Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary is a meaningless gesture, that there's no grit, no legal bearing, and that we're obligated to adhere to the state law. These statements leave us appearing to be helpless, voiceless, and ineffective as a city. We have the right and the duty still to appeal and petition our government when unconstitutional laws are being forced upon us. Declaring Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary is intended not for violence or divisiveness, but as an appeal to make it known that we, the people of Lynchburg, wish to uphold our constitutional rights and that we will not have our God-given freedoms infringed upon. Alexander Hamilton wrote, "No legislative act contrary to the Constitution can be valid. To deny this would to affirm that the deputy is greater than his principal, that the servant is above his master, that the representatives of the people are superior to the people themselves." With all due respect, you are the representatives of the citizens of the city of Lynchburg. We have come here to express opposition to these constitutionally invalid laws. You are elected constitutional officials, and you're bound by duty to represent the people of the city and uphold the U.S. and Virginia Constitution, not the agenda of Richmond. Article 1, Section 7 of the Virginia Constitution states that "the execution of laws by any authority without the consent of the representatives of the people is injurious to their rights and ought not be exercised." To abide by or adhere to these laws is to willingly hand over power which is not theirs to take. These laws are promoted with a faulty catchphrase of "security for the people and public safety." Where will my peace of mind and security be when someone who doesn't agree with me wants to wave a red flag and I'm put under some kind of examination process because of that? Or where will... On November 3rd, there was a shootout between criminals about 30 yards from my children's bedroom. The overflow of partiers from the street in front of us filled the street. There were multiple gunshots. It felt like endless shots were fired, and people were flooding out of my street before the police arrived. Nobody was able to be apprehended in time for the police to come. This place across from my street is known for criminal activities that go on.
Thank you, Ms. Childress. I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Robert Flint.
I'm Robert Flint, born and bred in Lynchburg. I love living in Lynchburg. I graduated from Easty Glass High School in VMI. Then I served my country in Vietnam. Thank you. When I left Vietnam, I left MIM-16 behind. I'm a civilian now. I don't need an assault rifle whose only purpose is to kill lots of people. I don't need bump stocks, silencers, or large-capacity magazines. I've hunted all my life, and I have rifles and shotguns. Nobody is proposing to take those away from me. I'm against Lynchburg becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary city. Thank you.
Tim Yance.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. Thank you for having this hearing. I have lived in Lynchburg 14 years. I was a student here originally, then I fell in love with the place. I made it my home. I live here, I work here, I vote here. I'm a gun owner. I'm a Second Amendment enthusiast, and I'm a veteran of the Virginia Army National Guard. We, the peaceful gun owners of Lynchburg, are deeply, deeply concerned. Contrary to the remarks of some members of this council, we are not violent people. We are not extremists. We are not zealots. You won't find a group of citizens more concerned with public safety than Second Amendment advocates. It's because we understand the inherent connection between public safety and the right of every individual to keep and bear arms. The General Assembly in Richmond has proposed a slate of gun control bills that would turn thousands of peaceful gun-owning residents of Lynchburg into felons for possessing firearms and accessories that we lawfully obtained and operate. These newly-proposed bills are extremely foolish, to put it mildly. They do not exhibit moderation. They do not exhibit a spirit of compromise. They rather exude a spirit of elitism and jackbooted thuggery, stopped only by the momentum of the sanctuary movement. When political leaders assume the authority to criminalize law-abiding citizens and even fantasize about using the National Guard against their citizens, what do you expect is the natural reaction of the people? It's this. When local political leaders allow state political leaders to criminalize their constituents, they surrender the moral authority to lead. Politicians in Richmond claim that these bills will make us safer. That's a false pretext for passing the bills. It's not about public safety, it's about control and domination of rural Virginia. These bills are authoritarian in their approach, they're totalitarian in their scope, and they are irrational to their core. They are evil, to put it simply. We are not fools. We see clearly through the pretext, through the rhetoric, through all of it. And we see clearly what their intentions are. What we don't see clearly now is what you're going to do to vote. And that's what we want to see tonight, is we want to see a straight-up or down vote on the Second Amendment sanctuary. If you don't pass that, at least reconsider the moderate proposal put forward by Councilman Nelson earlier in December. Thank you.
David Zills. David Zills. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that wrong. Carrie Riddle, Michael Graham, William Jennings, and Steve Troxel. Thank you. Mr. Zills.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, other members of council, and fellow citizens. My name is David Zillis. I live in Ward Three, and I'm here speaking as an individual. As a father of two children, I am very concerned about the proposed resolution to make Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary. It would give Lynchburg the unfounded power to not enforce potentially lifesaving gun laws that it deems unconstitutional. Hold up, I've got more. One of the most disturbing statements in the current proposed resolution is that Lynchburg City would be allowed, quote, "the power to direct law enforcement and employees of Lynchburg to not enforce any unconstitutional law." First, no law enforcement agency, city, or county can deem a state law unconstitutional. To do so is a blatant disregard for the rule of law and our state's constitution. Whether a law may be unconstitutional can only be determined by litigation in the courts and ultimately, the Supreme Court. Secondly, hold up. Secondly, and more important, putting this resolution into practice and breaking the law could lead to loss of life. There could be a situation where a judge provides a warrant for an EARC, an extreme-risk protection order, to remove an individual's firearms, and the chief of police refuses to enforce that warrant because he or she thinks it's unconstitutional. That individual might then use their firearm to harm or kill themselves, their family members, or go- members, or go to a school and commit a mass shooting, or any other number of scenarios that a person could perpetrate gun violence. The chief and his or her department would be held liable by law for those who were injured, killed, or murdered. Do we want to put ourselves in that kind of situation, where our law enforcement is breaking the law and refusing to protect us citizens, violating the oath that they have taken? Obviously, we wouldn’t. So, as a citizen who fears for the safety of my children and who believes in following the rule of law and our state’s constitution, I am strongly opposed to this resolution, and I ask the council to vote no. So, now, it gets better, though. It’s fine. Instead of asking our city council to pass a resolution that would put us in a situation where Lynchburg does not follow the rule of law, our constitution, and violates its charter, let’s use the democratic processes our founding fathers provided us. To vote to elect the state representatives we think will represent us the best, to meet and work with our state lawmakers, or run for a state legislative seat ourselves to serve the will of the people. So let’s all study the current gun bills as proposed...
Thank you, Mr. Zillis. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Carrie Riddle. And I will ask that those in attendance give respect to everyone speaking.